I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisors Finance Committee meeting Tuesday, March 24th, 2023, 3:00 PM, Board Meeting Room 39 Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cheshire?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
President.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Worley?
Here. Are there items to be added to the agenda?
No, sir, I have none.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Cheshire, seconded by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. Old business. Do we have any, Ms. Vanderheide? Okay. New business, item 6A, capital projects, FY 2023 priorities. Ms. Vanderheide.
Hey, Kim, I think you did want you to cut that mic off the side, please. I'll start again. Good afternoon. I'm glad to be here. I hope you all are ready to discuss the finances of the county. We're going to start with our first item on the agenda, which is the capital projects, FY 23. These are priorities that we identified during the budget process. These are some things that were requested in the FY 2024 budget, and they are definitely things that we've been putting off and things that absolutely have to be done. And so they are listed in your packet, but also on the screen as well. You have a copy of the slideshow presentation in front of you. But during discussions with Mr. Warren over the past few weeks, we found that we had some monies that we could identify in the FY 23 budget that could take care of some of these major projects, and they wouldn't affect our FY 24 budget. So those projects are listed there. There are three of those for the library, two of them at the Brasville Library, that being the replacement of the roof and the foundation repairs there, as well as the Chatham parking lot repairs and resealing. And then as far as IT, we need to replace some network switches that are past their life, as well as the CAD server for our 911 system. So those are things that we can't wait on. There are also some much-needed HVAC replacements that are needed in many of our buildings. And so we thought it would be best for us to go ahead and identify those things out of the current budget. So that building and grounds improvements line item currently has $1,001,3710870 in it. This would take $527,000, leaving a balance for other needs that may arise during next year. This money would carryover of $610,108.70. So if you all are okay with prioritizing these capital projects for this year, we would need you all to make a motion to that regard, and we would just probably just put it on our consent agenda for this evening.
Question, and you may not have answered.
Okay.
Building ground improvements for HVAC replacements, is that for just county buildings?
Yes. So we've identified, and if I misspeak, I've got Chris Slimp here. We had an energy study done not too long ago on most of our county buildings. So we're trying to embrace that study and get some of these things done. The Moses Building was identified, the Captain Martin County Administration Building was identified. We need to do something with the HVAC at our Human Services Building, where Social Services and the Health Department are housed, as well as our courthouse. Are there any I left out on HVAC?
As far as, are we talking about replacing?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is just the start.
The reason I'm asking, I know there's a long lead time on if we, if we get any HVAC equipment, would we pay for it now? Because I know we wouldn't.
If you could pay for it now, it would be cheaper because later it'll be more expensive, I'm sure, correct?
Well, I'm sure we're going to work with these guys and do what we need to do.
Yep.
I think if we could.
Pay on it.
I know how much, I know, one, I'm seeing six to, six months to a year lead time on HVAC equipment. And then when you do get it, the price has already gone up, and they're switching the coolant in a lot of them, and it's getting extremely expensive. So if we could identify what we could do and pay for it now, I think it would be better served, even though we'd have to be on a waiting list. Well, I like those ideas, and I'm sure we can allow staff to come back with when we can and can't pay for it. But if we couldn't, if they wouldn't receive payment now, this money will be set in a lockbox, so to speak, so it can't be spent for anything else. It'll be held for these in the future. But if we want to move forward, we got to get a motion on the floor so we can discuss it further.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer that motion.
Motion by Mr. Tucker. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Cheshire. Now we are open for discussion. From anyone. Any more discussion? Any committee members? Any at-large board members?
Would the CAT server be on that same boat as far as waiting? Or is that something that if we got, we can get it?
That would be a question for IT.
You brought everybody with you, didn't you?
She brings the big guns.
I've already been speaking with Dale on replacement servers, and because we were planning on doing it next fiscal year, they have a lead time of about a month, so it's not as bad. The other part was the network upgrades, the switches. We are seeing lead times on switches of over six months. So, but our vendors that we've purchased from in the past will put in a purchase order and honor that price, even if it takes it a year to come in.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. Chairman, also, so that my colleagues are aware, as we were working on the budget, we thought it wise to go ahead and appropriate this money so as to avoid a shortfall in the 24 budget. And we can't really put a number on that because of inflation, so these figures basically represent, you know, at the present, in terms of what it would cost. So in the coming year, as has already been stated, you don't know what it's going to cost. So the rationale was to go ahead and appropriate that money so as we could protect the efforts of the upcoming budget.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. It's a very valid point. And if you will notice, all of these items would actually be categorized as capital projects, not, it's not going to be a perpetual item and strain on future budgets. And that's why we looked at it to go ahead and try to take care of those now. We had the money in the building and grounds, and I guess to you gentlemen's point, that if this thing drags out before year end and you can't pay for it, then it could come in that it takes a little more money than this. But, Kim, you are reflecting that that house and ground will still carry $610,000.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay. All right. We got a motion and a second.
The motion to send this to the full board is approved. And I think you said, Ms. Vanderheide, you're going to put it on?
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Okay, thank you. We're down to 6B, FY 2022 budget update. Ms. Vanderheide.
Yes, I wanted to give you all an update of where we stand currently. I know it seems like it's taken a little bit longer, and it is, for sure. So this was our original budget calendar that you all approved back in January, and of course, we've gotten our requests in, and we've gone through those requests. And we're to the point that typically you're looking at, you've already seen a proposed budget, and you've already set your public hearing, and we're kind of at a stalemate right now because the state hasn't passed their budget. So a lot of the remaining items on this calendar will have to be rescheduled or recalculated as far as when we want to have that done. So I wanted to give you a brief update on where the state budget stands. So the Virginia General Assembly, they ended their session with no final budget on February 25th. The legislature did collectively approve what is known as a skinny budget before they adjourn. This amendment addressed the accidental $200 million shortfall in the state aid to schools statewide for the FY 23 year. And for us, that totaled between $500,000 and $600,000. This problem has not yet been addressed for FY 24. The House and Senate Budget Committees are still meeting to hash out differences in the two budgets. So Governor Yonkin is scheduled to amend, approve, or veto the General Assembly's skinny budget on March 27th, and then they're scheduled to reconvene on April 12th to take up any vetoes or amendments proposed by the governor. But of course, the governor can call them back at any time to approve or act on a budget. And you may wonder, well, how does that affect us? It may require us to provide more local funding to our schools. So the schools has already presented their budget. It was presented to their Budget Committee on March 9th, and it was based on the House version, which includes a 7% increase for school staff, which would relate to $760,000 in additional local funding from Pennsylvania County. This budget was presented to the full school board last week on March 14th, and it includes a total local funding request of $2,51,369. You all do have a copy of a synopsis of that budget that shows the different categories that they're requesting, along with their priorities and that kind of thing. They do have a public hearing scheduled for this budget on April 4th in their board meeting room across the street at 7:00 PM, not in this, in this room. So I want to talk a little bit about school information and why funding is so important and why we have maybe want to wait this year. So our standards of quality is the standard set by the Virginia Department of Education to provide quality education to all residents in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And a locality share to maintain an educational program to meet these standards is also determined by the state. The county's local share is determined by the locality's ability to pay. I know that you all hear that all the time, but our ability to pay is determined by the use of a local composite index. There's a lot that go into the calculation of the local composite index, but the majority of that is based on a county's real property value, among many other factors. So our current local composite index is .2511. Localities typically pay more than the minimum required by DOE. Pennsylvania County provides a total of $1.2 billion over the minimum required by the state. Now, that's a loaded thing. There are certain things that are in the state's budget that we have a match toward, and that match is based on .2511. There are some things that perhaps the state used to cover, and they say, well, we're not going to cover that anymore. The locality would have to pick it up. So at certain points, we actually paid quite a bit more than the standards of quality, and now it's a little bit less, but that's just based on that match. So I did a little slide for you that shows a graph of our SOQ funding versus our local funding, and this is from 2018 to 2023. Just bear in mind, 2023 are just budget figures, and the estimate for the average daily membership is also an average. The others are actual totals, and typically those amounts come out in March. So you can see there that the blue line is our SOQ requirement, and the local appropriation is the red line. So in all years, of course, we were greater than the standards of quality funding amount. That green line shows the average daily membership, or what we refer to as ADM. So you can see over time, our ADM has fallen, even though our contribution's more. And you will see in those out years, I do want to point out, those are greater because of all the ARPA funding and the CARES funding that we got that go into that. So that's part of all of the monies that we receive, that state, federal, and local. So if you look at the SOQ, since 2018, we have provided cumulatively $17 million over the standards of quality, which means had we only funded the minimum, the total from 2018 to 23 would have been $97,74729. Our actual total from 2018 to 2023 was $114,879901. But fortunately, we were able to fund over that minimum required local effort for our county. We've given schools a total of $3.8 million more in funding since 2018 over what we were providing them in the year of 2018.
So, Ms. Vanderheide, can we ask questions during this?
Absolutely.
She says she's always ready.
Yeah. I think it's interesting to point out, because there's always a lot of rhetoric that gets thrown around during budget time. And the fact that, just like in almost every facet of local government, the state continues to pass more of the burden down to localities.
That's right.
And it does become problematic, because we still have all the other expenses that we had. But we hear a lot about this, you know, we're 133rd, or we're 131 out of 137. Well, it's been very difficult, even though we're all believers in education, to move that needle when we see that from 2018 to the current, they have forced us to apply another $17 million just to meet the standards of quality. So when you add the 3.8 you mentioned, that's $20.8 million more than we were able to provide the school system in 2018. So that's over six years. If you do the math, we've actually been pretty fortunate that we've been able to give them, you know, almost $4 million more per year since 2018.
Well, now, don't confuse things, because it's based on, this is where we were.
It's based on your ability to pay. You went over that. I get that. But that, that ability to pay, if you can convince me that there's been enough increase in Pennsylvania County that's increased our ability to pay over that five-year period, I'd be really intrigued to see how you make me believe that, you know?
I don't come up with the formula. I just tell you what it is.
I know. And that's what I'm saying, you know? I don't believe we've increased our revenues to that same percentage, and that's what would have to incur in order for us, it to be an even playing field. And that's a whole different issue, different problem. That's a state-level problem, and, you know, we, but we need to, I've said this for the last, I know, six or seven years, that we need to figure out how to get the message to the state that every time they need to save money and all, they can't keep passing it down to the localities. You know, they got to figure out some ways to absorb some of that. That's, that was, I'm on the soapbox a little bit.
Soapbox, yep.
Just so, let me point out to you, I think I misspoke earlier, but I was getting to my other side, I think, in my brain quicker. This slide just shows SOQ, what they require of us, and then what we actually provided. And this is just local funding. This other slide shows our cost per pupil, which includes total funding, not just the local piece of it. So that's where you see that big uptick there in '21, '22, '23. That's when we started really seeing a lot of ARPA and CARES funding coming through. But you see that same line is our dip in our ADM. And of course, it took a great big dip during pandemic, when a lot of kids were learning from home, or parents decided they were going to teach them from home or do something different. So that's why you see a large drop. But I did talk to Ms. Worley, and I think they're seeing an uptick in ADM. So hopefully, those kids are returning to school.
Please, if any committee members or board members have questions, please ask them, because this is, this is really important information to have a good understanding of and grasp of how, how their budget works, because it's such a big part of what we do as a county, and they're such an important component for everything that goes on in the county as far as creating our workforce and developing those kids, so.
And just as a matter of note, even though these items like ARPA and CARES is included in these figures, and it does increase that per pupil cost, just bear in mind that a lot of that money was earmarked, just like us. You know, you have to use it for specific reasons and purposes. You can't just do whatever you want to with it. So it makes it challenging, to say the least. So I did want to make that comment.
Would the broadband funds be reflected in this?
All funds. So that's federal, state, and local, all pieces.
Also, Ms. Vanderheide, Mr. Chairman, very quickly, it's important that, you know, supervisors help control this narrative, because you have stagnant revenue, and you have the state asking us to fund additional money. You have an inverse relationship going on there. So we have to make sure that we're smart in terms of how we are actually trying to match some of these funding for the schools, that sort of thing. I mean, and to Mr. Warren's point, I think we all want to support the schools and the school systems, but at the same time, we have a serious issue with revenue, and until we get that straightened out, we're kind of in a quandary here.
Ms. Vanderheide, the ADM, is that, correct me, is that the admittance as far as pupils? Why, it's going down and going down. Does it ever reflect that on the, on the monies, when your population is going down?
Not really, because I do know that their population is not in a certain school. Not really, because I do know that their population is not in a certain school. It's sprinkled everywhere. So you can't say, well, we're going to close this school over here and save funding. So you still have the same number of teachers, the same amount of electric bills and everything. Correct me if I'm wrong. So it's some here, and some here, and some here. So, no, you really never see the financial part of it going down, really.
So even though we're less in three years, I mean, I mean, since two thousand eighteen, there's a significant drop. Your, it looks like your expense is getting higher, and you've got less students.
Well, this is based on your revenue. So it's revenue divided by the number of students you have. So, of course, as your students go down, and you're getting more money, of course, that cost per pupil is going to be greater and not less.
Uh, Ms. Cheshire, they, this has been certainly a question each budget year for a while, and what we have happening is we've got so many buildings because of almost a thousand square miles, that you get, and we'll use real-life examples, you lose a kindergarten and a second grade grader at Mount Airy, and then you lose a fourth grader and a third grader and a kindergartner at Union Hall. Well, because they're spread out, you know, there's no way to consolidate and eliminate a position, because that's the only way you truly, really get to reduce your budget, is by eliminating positions, or by, and I don't, I don't want this to come out the wrong way, because I don't want anybody running out saying, the board of supervisors want to close schools. But, you know, we have a unique situation because of our landmass, that it requires a lot of rooftops. And you know, you know better than I that with every rooftop comes a lot of fixed expenses.
No, absolutely.
So that puts us in the quandary, and where we may have a couple of schools that could absorb some more students, where we would place them are schools that are at capacity already. So, I mean, it, it is, you know, Ms. Worley does a great job with her budget and juggling all those numbers, but it's, it is, it is a problem.
I guess what I want, and maybe, and I apologize if it come across wrong, I noticed the trend's going down, and it's like requirements financially are going up, and we're having less and less, we're having less students, but our demands to be met by the county are steadily increasing. And I mean, county-wide, I'm not, you know, picking on, you know, district or anything, it's just that trend, and I guess I'm questioning, why is that? If we're losing students, why is our expenses getting more?
Well, see, in this particular instance, especially for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, we got injected with large amounts of federal money, large, that really was beyond our control, really. So, you know, of course, we have it, and then they tell you what you can do with the money. So that's what's driving, why it shot up so much, or else we would probably be about even, maybe a little bit more. But see how it really took a jump there? It's because of all that federal money that we received.
So when that did come in, we had to match the increase?
Now, for ARPA and CARES, no.
No, okay.
We did not. So this is all funding. It does include our local piece in there. The only thing we're matching or taking care of are things that the state's not able to cover, or it's something that they require a match in there, whereas before, they didn't require a match, things like that. So, but this includes all funding, which might be confusing. I thought at one time I'd do this graph and rip all that out, and I can certainly do that and take out those pieces, but then it wouldn't be a true, accurate picture. And I wanted what we had to mirror the schools. Any other questions before we move on? So the next section we're going to talk about is some of the budget challenges, and I'll talk about these.
Ms. Van Haart, let's back up a second.
Back up.
It looks, yeah, it looks like the ADM adjusts roughly a thousand students. Would you agree with that statement, from two thousand eighteen to current?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got approximately twenty rooftops, so that's fifty students. And there's typically, to get to, to break it down to your point, Ms. Cheshire, is we typically have about four grades, levels at each school. So if you divide that fifty by four, it's actually about one point two five per grade. You see, when you do, when we actually do that math, that's why it makes it hard to start reducing positions. So is that, you, you would like to say something? Would you all like to hear from Ms. Worley, since she's here?
Yes, that'd be good.
Please.
Come on.
So, and absolutely, maybe, um, you're starting all down from two thousand eighteen, but a very large drop, you know, in two thousand twenty, in the pandemic, and we are just now, just you're starting to see a little bit of an uptick, but I just wanted to bring it out. When the pandemic happened, you know, and we closed down in March of two thousand twenty, we had no idea what was, what was coming in that next budget year. You know, a budget was not passed because of the pandemic, we charged salaries, because we didn't know what it was going to look like, because our number was so low. But what the state did at that time is they held us warmly, and they've been doing that since that day. So that's another blue line, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. They're still funding us, based on that higher ADM. Okay, they're, they have a little line item there, called hold on, but it does not have a local match, okay, it's just state funding, but they have not, you know, touched that money yet, waiting to see how things start to play out, you know, once we recover, once this federal money is gone. But when you're looking at twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, you also have that large chunk of federal pandemic money, and you're not going to go away. So a year or two from now, our ARPA will definitely want to be left, because we're going to be taking a large chunk of that funding now. So I hope maybe that is a few things for you, but you're certainly right on the ADM, you know, as these numbers are being on, it's just not enough in one school to really make any difference. And speaking about four grades of school, our elementary's have three cases at fifth grade, and we have ten elementary's, so they have, you know, more than four, you know, grade levels for schools. So I hope maybe that, you know, I think there are a few questions, just why I think we're looking at the same rate going up, and then of course, for twenty-three, this current year and next year, the local composite index went up, because you see what that did to you, that really made a big change. And that's why you see an even higher uptick in going forward.
Okay. Any, any questions for Mr. Worley? Okay, everybody's good? Okay, thank you, Ms. Van Haart, but we saw we interrupted.
That's okay. We'll keep, I love it. I want interaction. That's great. So the next few slides are slides that you've already seen before, but I wanted to kind of address, did it make it in the budget? Were we able to fund those things, that kind of thing? So this is your budget challenges. It's actually slide fourteen, if you're flipping along. So our reassessment, the additional amount, we had to put that in. That is currently in the budget we're working on right now. Of course, the local, the cost of living adjustment that we have calculated usually is based on our CPI. In December, that was seven percent. We do have five percent. We have confirmed figures from the compensation board that will not change regardless of what happens with the House or Senate. We will not get any more than five percent for our constitutionals, so we have budgeted that well. I've already gotten estimates, and they match up with the revenue that I had anticipated from the state, based on a five percent COLA for everyone. Our cost share of the debt service for the cyber park shale building, that is included. And of course, all of our increases that we thought we would have, we've included those for fuel and electricity. The next slide shows that there was a request for fifteen new full-time positions and twenty part-time positions, three requests to convert part-time positions to full-time positions, and that cost was one point eight million dollars. We did fund some of those, and I'll go over those later in the slideshow presentation, so I won't bore you both times. Our capital request, we did some adjustments to that today, so we greatly reduced that four, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars by five twenty-seven this afternoon, and we made some further cuts that will not show up in the FY twenty-four budget. The local funding required to place the SROs in our elementary schools, that was going to require three hundred thousand dollars to match the salaries of those SROs that are full-time, that we already have. We put those into the grants, and then the ones that'll be in our elementary's will be part-time positions. We are working on possibly having some carryover funding from the sheriff's office that will take care of that three hundred thousand dollars. Also, today, we just had a grant that Vaden signed off on for the sheriff's office to apply for three hundred and seven thousand dollars of, it's an equipment grant, which should also help with this upcoming budget as well. So, and of course, our plug of eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, which we used our general services funding from ARPA to plug last year, of course, we don't have that again this year, and we are not plugging this budget with unassigned fund balance at this time. And so if we continue on, of course, we've got our economic development fund that we need at least a million dollars, and of course, we do not have that included in our FY twenty-four budget. There's no way that we could have done that, but there will be some funding to help offset the incentives that we have promised to our companies. So what is and is not included in this budget, I've alluded to some of it in these past few slides, but our general fund is balanced with no tax increase, and no frivolous requests have been included in this year's budget, FY twenty-four budget. So the new employees that are included, there are ten part-time SROs for the sheriff's office, nine part-time site operators, and two sanitation drivers to equip the new Meadow Ridge Court Convenience Center, one landfill-heavy equipment operator, and one part-time inspections administrative assistant. So all of your landfill positions will be covered with the enterprise fund funding. So that's not something that we actually had to come up with funding for, our contracts, our solid waste household fee, that kind of thing pays for those positions. Of course, there's minimal capital requests that are included. There is a five percent COLA included for all county employees, and there's no new funding provided for economic development. But there is money set aside should we need to put some money toward incentives that have already been approved by you all. So what are our next steps? We need to set a public hearing to approve the FY twenty-four budget. Now, the timing on that will be dependent on what you all decide, but I did want to include the code section for our schools that says, approval of the annual budget for school purposes states the governing body of a county and the governing body of a municipality shall each prepare and approve an annual budget for educational purposes by May fifteenth. We always thought it was May first, but it is May fifteenth. Or within thirty days of receipt by the county or municipality of the estimates of state funds, whichever shall occur later. So I think a lot of this is contingent upon the governor's approval, perhaps, of the skinny budget, because that is technically a budget, so if they did nothing with amendments. We do have estimates. Ms. Worley had estimates that she went off of, and of course, I have estimates from the state. So technically, we could set a budget whenever you guys are ready, and if you want to wait, that's absolutely fine, but just, you know, bear this in mind, we need to make sure that we follow the code. So with that, I can answer any questions that you have on the update. I'm very excited that we've been able to make it work with the revenues that we have. I don't think it's a bad budget at all, and so that's why you all don't have anything yet. And what's made it really nice this year is I get weekly updates from the commissioner of revenue as far as how far along they are with getting ready for the bills to go out, so we have a much tighter revenue forecast than we have in the past, which will be helpful for us.
Any questions?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
On the tax that we're going to collect in July, have you put that in as a figure? I know we don't know for the schools.
Oh, no.
You'll start collecting July one, right?
Right, and we don't have estimates right now, so what will happen when we start getting those in? Those will go into a separate fund that we will monitor, and we will collect those and will determine at some point, you know, what our normal amount that we'll get every month will be, and those are the amounts that will be used to help offset that debt service, and we'll decide when is the best time to maybe borrow funding to do some of those school projects.
So you hadn't even factored that into the budget?
No.
Because you really don't.
And that's just money in, money out. We'll get the money to come in, and then, of course, that's the money that we'll use for these school projects.
Yeah, it can, it can be spent for anything, but their schools' capital improvements. So, I mean, we, it'll have zero impact on the county budget.
Right, okay.
The other thing is, you know, it makes it very difficult to do the estimates, because some things have changed that would have been in sales tax numbers before that aren't there anymore, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And, like, because we're going to have to go to the market to borrow money for the jail and to do the school improvements, that's one of the motivating factors for us not taking any general obligated fund balance to pay for reoccurring expenses, because when you go to the market, the financial advisors, they ding you when you try to borrow money if you cannot point to a reason why you took general obligated fund, and they do not like it for reoccurring expenses, but they're okay with it for one-time capital needs.
That's why we, from a finance committee perspective, said, let's pay for those capital needs in this budget versus trying to move them forward, to eliminate taking anything from the general fund and hurt, hurt the county in the future endeavors. So, you know, I think my hat goes off to Kim and Vaden and all of the directors and executive team and everything for getting us to this point, because it, it was a tough budget year, very tough. I will say, I think, I think the code is pretty clear that until they come down and decide on that five or seven percent from the state on what those raises are going to be, we're pretty much okay. We got a thirty-day window after that, based on the code, so I think we should be really careful, because depending on how that comes out, could change our numbers. So I don't, I hope we won't act in haste in approving that final budget before we have the true numbers.
And that's a great segue to our next topic. Kim's going to explain a resolution that's on your consent agenda and explain what it is and why it's there, because that's going to allow us, even if we wait to do our budget, to allow the commissioner and the treasurer to move forward with tax bills.
That's correct. So they need something official, they being the commissioner of revenue and the treasurer's office, in order to know.
Just for the record, we, we've completed six B. We're moving to six C, gentlemen.
Correct. So this is talking about the resolution to set those tax rates. Typically, this is part of your budget resolution each year, and pretty much, it's just been ripped out of last year's budget. The only difference that you will see that is something that has to be changed every year is the personal property tax relief amount, because last year, those values were so very high that we were able to give fifty-five percent relief to our citizens. This year, those values came down, and so you have to look at the amount of money you get for relief from the state as opposed to the number of vehicles that are eligible for that relief, and then you have to make sure that you are proportionately giving that like you should. So now that relief figure is going down to forty-one percent, but that's the only change that you'll see here, but that would have changed regardless. We do that every year, but of course, your real estate rate is still sixty- that every year. But of course, your real estate rate is still 62 cent per hundred. The personal property rate is still the $9, and that's 30% of market value, and that's $9 per $100 with that 30% applied to it. And then your merchant's capital, your mobile home and barns, and contract carrier, all the same as they were. All of our fees, which are also attached, are exactly what was approved by you all in last year's budget. The only addition that I made this year to this fee schedule was water and sewer rates, and you all passed the increase to those just a few months ago. So I do have a copy of those as well. So when you pass your budget resolution, even though you've set these rates, they will still be a part of your resolution, but nothing will change. So we just need for you all to formally set those rates with this resolution. And so that's why we made that as a requirement at this meeting, so that they could go ahead and start the billing process. Any questions?
Questions from committee members? Questions from the entire board? Okay, we need a motion if we want to send this to the Board of Supervisors tonight. I still move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Tucker, seconded by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Kim, I'm assuming you're going to put that on consent agenda also?
Absolutely. It's already there. That was actually part of your report packet already.
Okay.
And we'll add the other item as well for the capital priorities.
Okay, we're down to matters from committee members. Mr. Cheshire.
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cheshire. Mr. Dudley.
I have nothing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Tucker.
Just want to take a quick second to thank Ms. Van De Heide personally for her hard work. And that's, that's a wonderful message to be able to tell the residents of Pennsylvania County that we're able to balance the budget with no tax increases. So kudos to you. God bless you.
Yes, as Chairman, I would like to echo those comments to Ms. Van De Heide and Mr. Hunt, who worked diligently with that. I'd also like to, again, thank the Finance Committee, who has been so helpful in this. And to Mr. Tucker in particular, I want to say thank you. He obviously has a lot of business acronyms and understands and was very helpful in the budget process and understanding the budget. I think he was a real asset to the process and is a real asset to the county. So thank you, Mr. Tucker. It was nice having you work on that. And likewise, with Mr. Dudley and Mr. Cheshire. Thought we had a good committee, and I look forward to getting to that final point. And everybody being comfortable, and it is good that we were able to get to the stage where we can look at our folks and tell them, "We're going to get it done, and we're not going to raise your taxes or increase your fees for next year." So thank you all again. Anything from any other board members, not only committee? Okay, seeing none. That completes all the items for this agenda, so I'll declare the meeting adjourned.